Thank you, Andrew. Good evening and welcome to the April 18th meeting of the Norfolk Select Board. We're going to start this evening by standing and saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're going to immediately go into executive session. Mass General Law 30A, Section 20A II to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, collective bargaining with the Norfolk Highway Department. Being in public session is contrary to the efforts of the committee and we will return to public session immediately following the executive session. Is there anything else I need to say?
I move to go into executive session.
Second.
And I'm requesting that two representatives from the local to be included in.
All right, do we need a roll call vote? Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
Kevin Calcutta, aye.
Jim Leehan, aye.
Thank you. Andrew, we're going.
Thank you and welcome back, um, excuse me, welcome back to the open, or the public part of the meeting on April 28th, Norfolk Select Board. We just concluded executive session, and we're going to begin with a public hearing before public comment about the Norfolk Cable Television. I read the opening statement included in my packet. Here we go. Good evening and welcome to the Norfolk, thank you for that, good evening. Good evening. Welcome to the Norfolk's Public Hearing on Verizon Cable License Renewal. I am Anita Mecklenburg, Chair of the Select Board, which is the Cable License Issuing Authority under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 166A. Notice of this hearing was posted in the local newspaper twice in two successive weeks. Copies of the legal advertisements are here entered into the record as hearing exhibits one and two. By way of background for the public, state law requires the holding of a public hearing prior to final action on a proposed renewal license, which shall include opportunity for public comment on the proposed renewal license. This hearing allows, um, this hearing follows a previous Select Board, um, ascertainment hearing and consultation with the Norfolk Community Television and CTV on Norfolk Cables needs. Based on information presented to the town and based on the recommendation of the Town Administrator, the Select Board may take final action on and approve or deny the proposed renewal license before us this evening. Public comments, if any, as well as questions to Verizon should be directed through me, and I will rule whether or not they are in order. Please keep your comments to no longer than three minutes. Before hearing from the public, let's first welcome and recognize Neil Connors from Verizon. There, hi. There we go. Um, if he is present and/or but remote, and then we'll accept comments from the public, if any, followed by the Select Board discussion of the proposed renewal and a possible motion regarding final action of the proposed renewal. So I'm assuming...
Madam Chair, in place of Mr. Connors for Verizon, Paul Train is going to speak on behalf of Verizon.
Go ahead. Welcome, Paul. Oh, we can't hear you. One second.
Paul, you're muted.
We're still, we are still...
There you go.
There we go.
Sorry about that. My name is Paul Train. I'm from Kirby Harrington, Pinkerton, and our firm serves as outside advisors and counsel to Verizon New England. Let me apologize, my, the lighting and the sound is not great. I'm coming to you from a hotel room in Washington, Um, I've, I've worked with Neil Connors from Verizon and the town administrator over the last several months to, to reach a conclusion to this agreement. Uh, as you know, Verizon served the community for the last 15 years, and that positive past performance, I think demonstrates that Verizon has the financial, legal, and technical ability to continue to provide cable service under this proposed renewal. Um, if you'd like, I can walk through a quick summary of the agreement, um, and I'll, I'll, I'll highlight just the relevant points. Um, the term is for five years. There is a termination and modification ability within the agreement, um, that Verizon could exercise after the 30th month with notice to the town. Um, Section 3 of the agreement requires that Verizon provide cable service without discrimination to all residents in the town, subject to certain enumerated exceptions in, in Section 3.3. Section 3.4 requires Verizon to provide free cable service to public buildings. Uh, Section 5 of the agreement requires Verizon to provide three standard definition peg channels and one HDP peg channel. Section 5.31 requires Verizon to provide a peg grant payable in three equal payments totaling $52,000. Section 5.4 requires Verizon to pay peg access support, uh, in the amount of 5% of Verizon's gross revenue in the town, which is the highest allowed under federal law. Section 7 requires Verizon to abide by both state and federal customer service regs and laws. Section 8 requires Verizon to, uh, open its books and records upon request from the town. Section 9 requires, uh, $6 million in general liability insurance, uh, for the term. Um, Section 9 requires Verizon to identify the town and its officials. And Section 10 requires a $50,000 performance bond. And finally, Section 13 is an enforcement mechanism that if, for some reason Verizon doesn't, uh, live up to the obligation to the franchise, uh, the town can either revoke the franchise or seek specific performance after a hearing. So that, that in a nutshell is the, the proposed renewal before you tonight.
Thank you for your succinctness. That was very helpful. Any questions? Should we open up for public comment first?
Yes.
Is there anybody who has, um, comments? Hi, Donna.
Oh, Donna and then Liz.
Liz, we'll do you next.
Hi, Donna Jones. Um, I thank the Select Board and Verizon for continuing to support public access. Um, it has been, um, very well received by the residents, and I'd hate to see it, um, decay or be eliminated. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Liz? Maybe she's.
I'm Liz Davy, and I'm Secretary of the Norfolk Cable Corporation, and I, that runs NCTV, and I would like to again thank Verizon and Justin particularly for working hard on this, uh, agreement that will support cable TV in Norfolk. Uh, as Donna said, it's been very well received, and we look forward to continuing our programming and expanding programming where we can, especially with the, uh, HD station that will come onboard in a couple of years. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Is there anybody else who would like to comment on this at this time? Seeing none. Is there any discussion from the board?
Paul, just to clarify, PEG stands for Public Educational and?
Governmental Access.
I probably should have got that last one, huh? Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Any questions? Justin, any background you want us to have?
Um, I would probably do it during the agenda item if you, when you close the, the hearing, if you decide to do so.
I have no questions.
All right, then I'll take a motion to close the hearing.
I move that the board vote to close the public hearing for the renewal of its cable television license with Verizon New England Incorporated.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All ready. Now, number three, now we're discussing.
Just for the background, this is a pretty standard renewal agreement. Uh, the board, uh, voted, uh, an additional agreement with Comcast for 10 years. Verizon does it for five years, um, but I, I do want to acknowledge Paul and Neil, uh, as well as Reynolds Lee, who was part of the team that, uh, from the Norfolk Community Television. Um, I think we reached a suitable agreement that benefits the town and, um, NCTV, and I'm, I'm very pleased, uh, with the agreement that we've reached. So I think it's a, it's a good, uh, agreement.
Excellent. Any thoughts?
None.
Uh, just one, it's just my ignorance. Are there any significant changes from this contract, from the prior contract?
We, we, the PEG grant was changed from the previous contract. That's the only.
In which, in what way?
It's a, it's a little of an increase than the previous contract.
That's it.
Excellent. The only thing I'd say, NCTV is one of the jewels in the crown of Norfolk, and so I'm grateful to everybody that, um, did the work to help us support them in that work. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Um, a little more than a motion, right? Finding that the cable franchise renewal proposal of Verizon reasonably meets the franchise and cable-related renewal needs and interests of the public and town of Norfolk, and finding that Verizon's financial and technical qualifications and local programming channels, facilities, and services are reasonable to meet the town cable franchise needs, and in accordance with the recommendation of the town administrator in favor of approval of the Norfolk Verizon renewal license, I move that the Select Board, as issuing authority for the town, vote to accept and approve the renewal license agreement with Verizon effective April 18th, 2023, and execute the renewal license.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Donna, for being here. Thank you, Liz. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Good luck in DC.
Thank you.
It must be all blooming.
Oh, it's true. It's true.
All blooming there. Beautiful place to be right now.
It is, actually. April's beautiful, DC.
Um, number four, a public meeting on the laying out of Wright's Farm Road.
Can I make a quick point?
Yes.
I think we might have skipped over public comment, just in case anybody did want to say anything for public comment tonight.
Oh, oh, the general public comment. We did skip over general public comment. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Very welcome.
Um, is there anybody with general public comment? I got distracted by the Verizon public comment. General public comment.
Somebody has to say something now that I said something.
That's it. All right, seeing no one, now we will move on to the laying out of Wright's Farm Road. Thank you very much for that. I appreciate it. Um, and Justin?
Yes. So as part of the process of accepting town roads, um, uh, the board, uh, has to, there's a, there's a procedure, and there includes a public meeting, prior town meeting, uh, where the Select Board, uh, takes public input. Uh, so in the packet, there's a letter, uh, from the town, uh, from the town planner informing the board that the planning board held their required public, uh, hearing on April 11th and voted to rec, uh, voted to recommend the Wright's Farm Road, uh, to be accepted at our town meeting, uh, at our annual town meeting this May 17th. A notice to the Butters about this meeting, a copy of the Butters list, and a copy of the certification that the board will sign, um, if the board determines to, um, to, to move forward with accepting Wright's Farm Road, um, as a road. So this is sort of a typical process in terms of accepting a road.
Thank you. Any comments or questions?
Nope.
Comments or questions?
The planning board is good with it. Who are we to argue?
No, that's the first letter right there. Thank you very much for everybody for the work to make this happen. I know that it was a lot of work, and I have no concerns or questions. A motion.
I move that the board vote to lay out Wright's Farm Road substantially in the location of the private way known as Wright's Farm Road.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. And number five, move to award various SERSG procurement contracts and authorize the town administrator to execute the contracts.
The town is a member of the Southeastern Regional Services Group. It's sort of a collective bargaining group, but it's, uh, allows for, uh, procurement for several communities. And so it's an annual process that the Select Board, uh, will review DPW, um, contracts that are used throughout the year. Um, just for the background, there's 26 communities that are part of this, uh, Regional Services Group. And so these, um, these various bids, which are listed in the, um, uh, in your packet, are for super pave, hot mix asphalt, sidewalk construction, chip seal, rubber chip seal, guardrails, crack sealing, uh, and paving. Uh, the DPW directors reviewed all of these. I've reviewed all these, so we're, um, asking for you to award these procurement contracts. And therefore, from March 1st of 2023 to February 29th, 2024.
Thank you. Questions?
Uh, no, it's a standard practice.
Very much so.
I agree.
I move to award the SERSG procurement contracts as authorized by the town administrator and to execute those contracts.
Do we need to cite the range of dates as part of the motion? Great, in that case, I second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Um, now we need to vote to rescind some ARPA appro, uh, all the ARPA appropriations. Is that correct? We're going to rescind them all?
We won't rescind all of them. We are going to rescind, uh, so as our previous Select Board meeting, there were, uh, a few ARPA appropriations that we had identified for consideration, so I, um, recommend that the board rescind the five, um, ARPA appropriations. In your packet, we've included their original ARPA list, and you'll have a revised ARPA list, assuming that the board does vote to rescind those ARPA appropriations. That way, we can utilize those ARPA funds to balance the budget.
I just have one favor to ask.
Yes.
I, I, my eyesight is still pretty good, but this is a tough one.
Yeah.
I agree.
I, can you, when you do these?
Yeah, we'll make it bigger.
A little bit, I mean.
Or turn them.
Yes, landscapes.
Yeah. Turn them any way you want. Just make them bigger.
I, I agree. I agree.
I, you know, my 125s aren't working on this.
We will do that.
Thank you.
And just to clarify for anybody listening, um, this is a difficult decision that, um, we're making to rescind these monies. We were hoping to support these projects, and, um, due to a, a perfect storm, as Justin has explained to us financially, um, we are needing to make some difficult decisions in order to, um, offer forward a balanced budget. So, um, we recognize that these are, it's a difficult decision, but it's an important one in order for us to balance the budget.
And it in no way, shape, or form indicates that these projects will never be funded, right? It just means that as part of the initial ARPA funding cycle, uh, we aren't going to be able to fund them via that mechanism.
Correct.
So, so make sure we know that.
Do we accept a motion?
Do we have a motion?
I will move to, at the town administrator's, uh, suggestion, to rescind the ARPA appropriations for fiscal year 2024.
As indicated in the memorandum.
Right, because there's other appropriations that we're keeping, right? Yeah, okay. Yep. Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for doing that work, Justin. I know that wasn't fun.
Thank you.
And we're moving on to fiscal year operating budget.
So as, uh, we had discussed at our previous Select Board, uh, meeting, as part of our proposal, Finance Director and myself, our recommendation to balance the budget, uh, we were assuming that we would rescind some ARPA appropriations, which the board just did, and that we utilize free cash, um, in the amount of 159,215 dollars to balance the budget. So in the board's packet is an overall fiscal year 24 budget, um, summary document. I want to thank our Finance Director, Todd Linmark, who put this all together. Um, and so it reflects a, a balanced budget that incorporates those changes. Um, Todd, if he wants to add anything to that, but, um, part of our next steps of, uh, in this process would be if the board votes to approve this budget, um, we will sort of do some budget narrative, prepare for, um, a town meeting. I do want to let the board know that this year, the budget presentation might be a little bit different because we're utilizing ClearGov. So Todd is doing the work to sort of, um, lay the from, uh, framework to do a budget book for the following year, so we won't have that this year. We'll just have a budget narrative in this back, uh, backup information, uh, but I do want the board to know that the budget will look a little different this year as we transition to ClearGov.
Thank you. Is there anything you want to add, Todd?
Uh, so as presented, the budget is now balanced, obviously with the ARPA funds and the free cash, uh, adjustment. Um, being mindful, that's not where I really wanted to go, but, uh, again, perfect storm this year with the KP budget, the increase overall of schools, our health insurance, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, um, I'm being mindful, you know, going forward, trying to make sure, you know, as a town, we're responsible. Um, actually, next week, I have a call with SMP for the debt funding that we're going to be doing with the fire station, um, and they've already given us a bunch of questions, and, you know, some of those issues are, you know, are you going to be having a balanced budget? Do we have capital plan, all those things in place? So, uh, the good news is we have those items in place, and it's going to be helpful. So, um, you know, we're trying to be very fiscally responsible, um, in this product that we're providing, uh, for the town overall, but being mindful of the services that we're trying to also incorporate and not to try and strip everything out that we, um, have to, um, in order to get to buy. Um, the one item that's here that, um, may change, obviously, is the state monies. And I think we've had a conversation, you know, obviously, if there's additional state monies, we'll try and help out best with the schools, uh, trying to figure out how that funding mechanisms, mechanisms is going to work. So far, with the revised, um, budget that just actually came through yesterday, um, there's about another $30,000 that we're getting between the nets, but that's not finalized. Um, obviously, it could completely change. And again, it depends on the demographics of who's going to which charter schools and things of that sort. So we're just being mindful of where we're at with that, so it's not finalized, but I'm keeping on top of it.
Thank you. Any questions?
I thought he was going to come up here, sit down, and say, no, nothing else to add.
I was contemplating.
You can talk offline.
Yep.
Do you have any questions?
Just one top, can you remind me, I, I, the, um, the debt on KP, uh, is two more years?
Twenty-six, it comes off, yeah.
What, I'm sorry?
In 2026.
Three more years.
Will be our last payment.
And have you made a decision on the prior funding on short-term versus long-term?
Uh, so we're going to ban the first round, which is going to be about 18 million, to get us through the first year, based on the cash flow, and then at, uh, next year.
Good decision.
Look to, uh, bond that in total.
That's why you're the finance.
Hopefully, it comes in lower amount.
Hold on.
Just for the general public, we use ban as a bond anticipation note. Short-term financing, uh, allows us to make some long-term financing decisions.
Well, interest rates will come down eventually. Good decision.
Can I have that in writing?
Huh?
Can I have that in writing?
Sure. It's, it's worth the paper that I write it on. They will come down.
Thank you for this work. I know that, um, wrestling with, with, um, the situation was difficult, and I really appreciate the time and energy that, um, to bring forward a balanced budget for the town.
We'll talk about that one tomorrow.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Are we good?
I think so. I move to approve the operating budget for fiscal year 2024 as outlined by Town Administrator Casanova Davis and Finance Director Linmark.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Todd.
Thank you. Thank you, Justin. Um, and number eight is an overall budget discussion.
We put that as a, uh, agenda item. I think there was just a desire by the board to talk a little bit about some of the budget issues that are emerging in the future. Obviously, we have, um, you know, the fiscal year 24 budget, uh, we have the school expansion project, uh, the board had the Tri-County, uh, project that was presented before, so I think this was just a placeholder for the board to start talking about some of the budgetary challenges or issues that are emerging for the town in the future.
The board is tired this evening.
Well, I, I don't, I don't want to get into this in great detail, but I think at some point, um, we need to talk about the, um, two school projects that we know are on the horizon, um, one of which is pretty much out of our control, and that's Tri-County, and one of which is within our control. And, uh, and I'm not, this is not a statement of pro or con. It has nothing to do with that. This is strictly a financial consideration, and we need to take a careful look at the financial impact of that, because it is. financial impact of that because it is significant. I asked Todd to run some numbers today for me and I wasn't too far off, but his are right on the money. And it's a huge hit that we have to, we have an obligation to talk about at some point. Not tonight, but because we don't know quite where we are with all of this. But we do have a proposal from Tri-County. We know pretty much what that's going to be. If you use a 4% assumption as our percentage of the enrollment, which is what we did today, it's going to have an impact. And what worries me about it is it's a variable impact. You know, it's, we, I've never seen a debt obligation that a town has to assume where it's a variable payment because it's totally contingent on the percent of students we have in the school. So we assumed that, what, 4% today, I think?
Yep.
And we're actually, I think, at 3.6, 3.7. So 4 wasn't an unfair number. But if it goes to 5, goes to 6, our bill goes up. And we're going to have to figure out how we fund that because it's not, it's not something we can absorb in the operating costs.
And one of the biggest, or one of the factors that also contributed to the perfect storm this year was the budget item from them because it increased 22.5% from last year. And that's based on the increased number of students that have gone to the program, which, you know, if there's more that go to the program.
This is going to be kind of a mind challenge for us because the amount is going to be in excess of what we can absorb. So we're looking at some form, hopefully, of a debt consideration, but it's a variable number.
So what do you ask for?
And I've not encountered that before. This is a new one for me. So we're going to have to figure out how to do this because, I mean, I don't know how many, I mean, the reverse could be true. We could go down to 2%. You know, I have no idea. But we're not going to stop it. So we just have to start planning for it. Anyway, a future problem, not for today. But it is a couple of years away, but we need to be thinking about it.
I think from my experience with the Norfolk Public Schools, and that was at HL of Day and Freeman Kennedy, they're already so incredibly crowded and we have musicists traveling and artists traveling and the programming that, the programming that we used to be able to offer to kids, we're not able to because the space is so limited. And so the needs are real in terms of the space needs for the schools and uncomfortable because of the cost and because on the heels of another big project. But it just is that perfect storm of those two projects lining together and they're both necessary items for our town.
Yeah, I'm not arguing the pros and cons of the school. You will find no greater school supporter than probably the three of us on this board. So that's not the issue. It's just that we have to think through the financial implications of it because they are significant. Maybe you should probably, I asked Todd to do some numbers for me today and they're, it's a heavy lift. We just got to figure it out. I'm not denying the need. That's not the question.
Question is how?
I'll also throw out there, the one thing that I've been really harping on for the last week and a half has been prison mitigation and what we should be expecting moving forward with that because, as you know, this year came in 62% less than we typically receive. I did some digging and speaking with other state representatives from districts that have correctional facilities in them. And the message I heard was, look, high level, you can never be given less than what was proposed in the Acts of 2011. And so they said, if you came in under that, you need to go back and get your money. Went to go back and look at the Acts of 2011. Thank you, Todd, for sending it over.
When did we drive in?
It was the one year we got sub $100,000.
Oh.
The one year. So the amount that we got this year did not go against that. And further, in this year's proposal, it is cited that this is the last year that they'll be receiving money for Cedar Junction and Walpole. So I do believe that we'll be losing the Walpole delegation as part of our advocacy group who's going to the legislature to advocate on our behalf for those monies to come back to town.
Seeing as they've always been getting more than we have anyway, and they don't have a single prisoner in their town, it's always been an interesting conversation, hasn't it?
And then what happens to that facility?
Well, that's up for debate and I believe that everybody's kind of waiting on bated breath to hear what the plan is going to be for that facility, especially the Walpole Select Board. But high level, thinking about how we forecast the monies that we expect to get from the state, I think we have to have a very difficult conversation about if we should be even expecting funds coming in like that. Because each year before this year, about $2 to $2.5 million was put into the general fund to be given to communities and municipalities that host these facilities. Last year was $500,000.
There have been years when they actually took completely out of the budget.
Right.
And we got zero.
So you think about, now we have, in essence, four fewer people advocating on our behalf on Beacon Hill for this line item. Could we go back to those times?
Good point.
Yes. I remember Deval Patrick coming down and us asking like, who's going to pay for the ambulances? You're not giving us any money.
Oh, I remember that conversation.
Yes.
It's also in a time where if you were to ask Chief Kinney, our calls are going up to the MCI Norfolk right now. So 62% less in funding, 24% more in calls year over year.
Well, we, if you want to call this the perfect storm, we've got some challenges ahead. And we've really got to think this one through. We'll be best friends. I didn't mean to ruin your evening.
I'm good. Looking forward to it.
Well, I don't want to end on a doom and gloom note.
No, no. It's a reality.
Identify too, that a lot of the things that we're encountering this year are not intended to be recurring things, right? That's why we talk about the perfect storm and not the perfect Armageddon, right? This storm will pass and next year, we do anticipate that many of these, that double knock is really worrying me, Todd. But not everything that we're experiencing this year, we expect to be recurring in nature, right?
I'm hoping not.
Right. The insurance won't be that high. The insurance won't be that high again, she says confidently. King Philip won't be that high again.
Remains to be seen.
I think one of the things that is really important is sort of financial professionals is we're hopeful that that isn't the case next year. A lot of the issues that we did face this year were fixed cost driven, though. They weren't revenue driven for the most part. So, you know, health insurance, we're hopeful that it is, you know, they gave us a range, we're at the highest of the range, but that's claims driven. So hopefully, you know, maybe there's less claims this year that brings things down. The KP assessment was an assessment we haven't seen for the past six years at that level. So is it likely that emerges again? Probably not, but there is a lot of unknowns. So there, you know, we're still going to be on guard, but I don't think that. There are some things that we can be hopeful about. I do let the board know, you know, the MECA assessment, though, that grant, this is the final year of that grant, and that was 25%. So that will increase next year, too. So there are some things that, you know, we're hopeful about. There will still be some things that we'll have to look at. I think you made a great point, Kevin, about the prison mitigation funds. That's a question, you know, do we include that as part of our revenue? Because revenue, sort of being more conservative on revenue allows us the free cash that we need to fund our capital improvement plan as well. So there's different things that we have to take a look at, but I think we're trying to get through fiscal year 24 and we'll look at fiscal year 25 very soon.
One step at a time.
Yes.
Thank you. And then number nine is a third quarter review.
Excellent. So hopefully, in your package, you have a couple of documents.
Me too.
First one's going to be.
Yep.
Overview of revenues and expenditures on general fund. So we're on track, tracking very well as far as the revenues that are coming in, where we anticipate to be comparatively to last year as well as this year. I don't see anything that's going to say, hey, we got a problem here as an issue on any of the line items as far as revenues. Expenditures, again, are tracking a little bit lower, which is a good thing. Some items are typically front-loaded, like a lot of the employee benefits. We have to make payments for retirement in July to get the discount, pay some building insurance, some of the debt projects, you know, they're paid throughout the year, but majority of them are pretty much paid off at this point. There's a few that have got to be finished up over this next month or so. But for the most part, most of the departments are coming in at less than 75%, which is what the tracking should be. So we're showing a pretty good positive right now. That's not where we're going to end up, but don't bank that as of yet, but that's where we're trending right now based on the revenues and expenditures. This sheet, which is the overall revenues broken down by the various categories, again, everything's tracking very similar to last year. I don't foresee any major issues that are popping out at me saying, hey, we got a problem here. Maybe you guys have questions on them. One that I do have is the meals tax. You'll notice that that is at $41,000 right now. DLS did let me know that there was meals taxes coming into Norfolk previously that were for another community. So they took those and credited them back. So trend is typically we have about $80,000 or so. And last year, we were close to $119,000, which included that community's taxes. So they made that adjustment. Will trend a little bit less than what I had budgeted of 80, but we're going to probably come in at about 65. So not too far off of where we put the budget, obviously not over where I expected, but that was again, a mistake at the DLS, but they obviously identified it. I only get the amounts, they tell me, hey, here's your meals tax dollar amounts, doesn't give me any breakdown or anything like that. I found out the hard way by realizing, hey, you didn't pay me the first quarter, why not? Well, there was a credit that was applied for, so that's why. But that's really the only one that's kind of an outlier and it's not that much of an outlier. So I didn't know if you had any questions on those two animals.
I do not, do you have any questions?
I had one question. The one number that popped out to me was the licenses and permits and fees. Is there any one specific area that you're seeing a surge compared to expectation?
No, not really. Again, Bob's building departments, that's really all the permitting and fees are coming from that office there. So the trend again, I need this real quick. So we budgeted 450, we're at 422 now, and we still have, you know, the rest of the quarter to go through. So, you know, it's definitely not going to be the 600,000 that we were last year. It'll probably be a little bit less than that, but it's still very favorable from what we budgeted.
Got you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
No, no, I went through it. I appreciate it. Looks fine.
I appreciate the update.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
One other item, I don't know, is the transfer station information that you have.
Yep.
Again, reviewing that quickly, the way we have that set up is we have revenues budgeted of $250,000 coming from their activities, but we have expenses that are budgeted 435. So by design, it's set up as a deficit amount. But we're trending pretty good. Revenues are coming in as expected, similar to last year currently. Again, the big fees, decals are going to be coming in May, so you're going to have, you know, $50,000, $60,000 more coming in revenues to help out increase levels as well. And then our expenses are trending a little bit lower than where they should be based on budgeting, which is a good thing, trying to keep an eye on expenses. So each year, we're trying to get that gap a little bit smaller and smaller and that's been the trend and so far, it's been successful. Compliments to the DPW, Blair and Barry for doing their efforts over there.
Thank you.
And Christine for putting this together.
Nope.
All right, then, we are going to move on to.
And thank you, those were good reports.
Sure.
Excellent. Very grateful. General updates.
All right. So I have, just to promote an event for the master plan, next week, there is a meeting that is for the community, is part of the Norfolk Master Plan Visiting Forum. So we're encouraging the community to go and attend that event. It'll be Tuesday, April 25th at 7:00 PM. It's the Freeman Kennedy School Cafeteria. This is an in-person event. So, and there, I believe they're offering light refreshments there, so to encourage people to go and attend. But it's a great opportunity to have your voice heard about what you're thinking about for the future of Norfolk. I do want to give just a quick update on the Norfolk Fire Station. This week, they're breaking ground on some construction work there.
Yesterday, they dug a hole yesterday.
Yeah, they started the work yesterday, so, you know, that's going to be moving forward. The Fire Station Building Committee meets every month and weekly, we meet with our OPM and the construction, the general contractor to proceed with this project. So we're proud that ground was broken yesterday. There is going to be a ground, official groundbreaking ceremony that will coordinate with the board in May for this project. Those are my quick town administration updates.
May I ask a question on the senior center? Where are we at with?
The senior, great question. The senior center, we're still progressing. They're making sort of work there. I think this project is going to take a little bit of time. We don't have a timeline that we want to put out there just yet, but there is progress being made. Our facilities director, Matt Hafner, has worked with our insurance company and our general contractors to move this project forward. So for the time being, senior services will still be located in Town Hall and at the Grange as well.
Thank you. And I do not have any updates. Do you have any updates?
I have to reiterate the importance of highlighting the master plan meeting that's coming up on Tuesday. We had our first meeting of the master plan committee last week. It's a great group of individuals who are really laser-focused on trying to do what's best to capture as much information from the public as possible, but the only way that that works is by people participating. So this is really the first big step. After this in-person meeting, we're going to be putting out a survey, which can be done electronically, so we're hoping to get a lot of capture and feedback via that mechanism. But being there in person to be able to provide insight and feedback and expectations, I think, is going to be one of the best ways for us to be able to hone in on what exactly the community is looking for in this project. So if you can make it, please mark on your calendar, 7:00 PM, April 25th, at Freeman Kennedy Cafeteria.
Excellent. I want to reiterate, recently, when I was getting signatures for, to pull papers and talking to people, they have really big ideas about what Norfolk should look like and what Norfolk should be like. And so this is a really important chance for people to say what they think and not be in the shadows of it, but be in the foreground of sharing your opinion of what you want for Norfolk for the future. So please do consider sharing your opinion in person with the refreshments, which are sure to be excellent, and also electronically, so Norfolk turns into the community that you want it to be. So thank you. Any updates from? All righty. Then we have some warrants.
Send me an email on that tomorrow, what the difference is on those, okay? All right, thanks.
I move to approve the warrants dated April 4th through April 11th, as highlighted in the agenda for this meeting.